The 4th day, the 7th special session, House of Delegates, 11th or 12th of July. I'm not going to go more order there. There are all the same way, the same day, at 8 o'clock. We get our vehicle, we go to the lake. We'll add back everything we will. Where do we go, at the end of the day, there are all the same thing. Clerk of the General Court.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Arura.
Oi.
Delegate Kibon Jr.
Oi.
Delegate Kullibert. Floridar Kanai. Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino. Vice Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Niatka Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Ongitobla. Delegate Otobla.
Oi.
Delegate Alulko.
Oi.
Delegate Sinzak.
Oi.
Delegate Swalably.
Matiam.
Delegate Talley.
Oi.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Mr. Speaker, any question?
So, any question, I'm going to ask you, the delegates have been asked. There were 15 people, Matiam, the delegate that was there last week. More excuse to develop more way. And we said, we have to go, we have to go. I'm going to ask you, especially the delegate in Iraq, the delegate will move it. The other Iraq, he is civil, he is now a senior. He is a soldier. And because the most important thing is the supplemental budget. He is going to be there, national, domestic government. But we are going to see the flower. We will allow them to make the 8 o'clock.
Oh, we will see, we will see. Vice Speaker, I'm going to tell you, the delegate in Arura. I'm going to tell the delegate Kanai, I'm going to tell the senior member, Delegate Kullibert. I'm going to tell the members, the speaker, I'm going to tell the members. And we have a calendar, we have item 4, the A B. And I see the under item, the motion. Most of the different actions are here, they are here, the 22nd day, general, the 6th regular session.
So, the movement, the different journal, in the second day, the delegate will go and say to me. On top, the flower.
Well, the most important item, I'm going to tell you, the communication, I'm going to tell the president of the Republic of Meridig. Speaker, my one or five communication, the president, executive order number 469. That means we organize the land settlement agreement review. Sell. Commitment, amend the executive order 468. Executive order 469, and amend the 468. Here is the length settlement. Yeah, on the other communication, the president, Meridig, one or six, to transmit the executive order 470. It is more revised, the membership criteria, my working deadlines, more, here is the review of the committee. The President's proclamation, 22326, the declare May 21, 2022. More world, tabaco day for the Republic of Palau. Again, the president, the speaker, don't get our vehicle, take note, and the tool communication, with appropriate part, the calendar, and the speaker. The most important item, item 8, Senate communication, the Meridig, the table. 149, I give you the information, we are ready, the Senate, adoption of Senate, we are the House change resolution 11-23-6 S. It is the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education. The vice speaker, adopt the same house resolution. 150, the information, we are the direct action. Here, we are the gun friends draft one, we are the Senate number 11-59. HD2, the senior, the CD1. The most important item, nine, I'm going to tell you, the report, I'm going to tell you, the report, under item, I'm going to. I'm going to adapt the Senate report number 11-58, it is the House bill number 11-64-7 S. Sell the. I am saying, speaker.
So, the motion, in the last year, the report, in the second day, where are the discussions? And if the delegate, the chairman, who is the minister, I will speak to him. I will brief review, the report.
So, the speaker, I'm going to speak to him. I'm the speaker, I'm Floridar, I'm going to tell the delegate, Arura. I'm going to speak to him. Speaker, the report, the 12 pages. The members, in the beginning, basically, the changes of the format, the. The most available, the movement, the intent, the changes, we will make the report. We did set the speaker. The report, the House bill number 11-64-7 S. The title, the speaker, to authorize inappropriate additional sums from the National Treasury for Channel Operations. I will be there, fiscal year, I'm going to September 2022. The amendment title 27, to authorize a marine special planning process within the Palau waters. It permit certain marine research and local community based fishing activities within the Palau National Marine Sanctuary. For related purpose. We will see, the speaker, the report, the 24th, 2022, the fiscal year, the president. The budget authorization and appropriation, we are the House of Delegates, the Senate. Yes, the following day, the May 25th, they give a new introduction in the first meeting, and I'm going to sign it. Designate the House Bill number 11-64-7 S, the report. As the primary purpose, the speaker, more authorize appropriate 2.6 million. From the National Treasury. It is the authorized ministry of agricultural services, my environment, the marine special planning. The. Effective date, effective date, the marine special planning, I will be there, September 2024. While the. We will be there, 2022, 2023, 2024. The more clearly defined, the role, the role of my fee, we are the. Role of my fee, my Palau Marine Sanctuary, my domestic fishing zone. My vote, the committee, I'm going to review, the vote, the speaker, the committee review. Sell additional appropriations. The whole. The committee, I'm not going to throw. I can see, I'm going to transmit to the president. My good appropriations under the House Bill number 11-64-7 S. The fund availability analysis, the speaker, I'm going to talk to you. The speaker, I'm going to review, I'm going to talk to you, the two simple prosperity plan, the president. My director, the most, I can do some budget history. The speaker, the May 26th, the committee, I'm going to talk to the Minister of Food, the zoom. The senators, the director, I'm going to clarify, the funding assistance, the prosperity. With information provided by the president, I can confirm, Mr. Minister of Food. My committee, I'm going to talk to the fully assess, the House Bill number 11-64-7 S. And I'm going to say, physically prudent and responsible, more we are needs. Logi, we can get the authorization, appropriation, whatever public needs. But since the inception of COVID-19, the global pandemic, we, the national government, we took significant steps. To alleviate the problems, negative impact, the pandemic. And the government, the members, the committee. And we can get the steps, including, I would action, the national government spending, we are going to 80% catalog in the budget, the 11. The 2022. And the explore, the legislation, the alternative resources, the speaker. We are going to allow, the pass, and the. And the open additional revenue streams, the government, the. The. My baby, the speaker. And we can get the steps, yeah, we can get the. As well. The. The. We are going to get a better recovery, the economy, the speaker. My partner, the steps for full economic recovery. And we can take additional time fully realized. The statute, the fiscal 2022 budget. The budget, after, we can take a conservative and strategic approach. The reduce, we can get the. At the same time, maintain, I can, essentially, the national, the state government operations. The speaker, I'm going to get, the director, the. 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 The approach, we can take, the speaker, the House Bill 11-64-7 S. The proposed by the president, solely, the purpose, appropriate, we can get the fund, the national. My state government. And the. The speaker, we can get additional funds, the speaker. We can get the proposal, the president, I'm going to talk to you. The border, my customs, my protection. The speaker, I'm going to talk to you, school administration, M O E food service. The national capital electricity maintenance, the speaker. The speaker, I'm going to talk to you, public safety, I'm going to talk to you, the disabled and assistance fund. So, the speaker, I'm going to tell you, the president, I'm going to say, I'm going to. I'm going to say, the speaker, I'm going to say, neither the. My director, the view of hospital, clinical service, the speaker, I'm going to say. We can get the most, the. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to say, 1.6 million. I say, we can get the blue prosperity plan, we can get the funding sources, I mean, as proposed by the president. The speaker, the most, the. 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 I'm going to tell you, the president, I'm going to. The. Independent essentialism, the National Aviation Administration, the director, I'm going to tell you. We can get the, I can get the, the president, I'm going to create a legal revenue. And the. 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 The state government and operations. And we can get the president, the speaker, the most, the amount. As proposed by the president, I can total, I'm going to 799,000. I'm going to say, the source out, we are the blue prosperity plan assistance. We can get the speaker, the most, I'm going to say, smooth, I can get the total amount, I can get the total. I'm going to correct, according to the report, the. That was in 12 pages, and then basically, we can get the purchase, and then I'm going to get the. The. To finance, we can get additional appropriations, the president, Whip's Jr. The identify, secure funding assistance under the blue prosperity plan. We will express, the. I transmit to the. The speaker, I'm going to say. The public conservation partners have committed. We can get the conservation partners, I will be there, I'm going to meet, we can get the. Provide, we can get the 2.6 million annual for the next three years. The leader, I'm going to talk to you, the appropriation. And authorize, I'm going to talk to you, the. The. And we can get the appropriate, we can get the. The. We can get the blue prosperity plan, the strategic plan, we are the generations, the fishing revenue. The conservation efforts. We can get the fishing, the conservation effort, I can get the blue prosperity plan, I'm going to talk to you, the. Logi, I'm going to say, the president. The speaker, I'm going to say, the speaker, the president, the president has proposed. 2,399,000, we can get funds. To be directed, we are entities, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. The speaker, I'm going to tell you, 299,000. I say, the. 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 The committee, the support, we are the last, we are the. The. Prosperity. We can get the free up, I can get the legal revenue, we can get the. We can get the blue prosperity plan, we are not going to. The. Ma. N A A. Logi, I'm going to get the blue prosperity funds. The. 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 Review, we can get the appropriation, logi, I'm going to tell you, the local revenues. The. 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 Minister of Finance, the zoom, I'm going to say. The. I can get the F A L government, I can get the. The. I'm going to send the F A L. The. I'm going to say, the. Appropriation, the legal revenue, I'm going to say, the additional 200,000. So, I got, the. 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 The marine special planning, my good roads, the ministry of agricultural services, environment, my big week. My next, the committee, I'm going to consider, I can propose amendments, authorize a marine special planning. I will be there, I will be there. And we can clearly define the role of my fee, the ministry of agricultural services, environment. My big week, as they relate to the Palau National Marine Sanctuary, my domestic fishing zone. We can get the. 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 I'm going to. I define, I'm going to tell you, my fee, we can get the. The. They still relate, we are the. National Marine Sanctuary. The. The. Support, we can get the amendment, the president, I'm going to say, we can get the. The. Special, a marine special planning. The. Encourage exploration of an approach, we are the marine resource management. We can get the speaker, the. The. Marine resource management, my conservation, I'm backed up by science, my economic need. We can get the. The. Speaker, we can get the. The. Economic need, I can get the support, we are the legal, social, and economic factors. The environment, we can get the. I'm going to support, the economic need, my factors, I will be there. My committee, I can find, I'm going to get the proposal, the president, I'm going to say. I will be there, we sources, my authority, my capability, both develop, we can get the. The marine resource management, logi, approach, we are the. Balance between natural environment, conservation, promotion of national economy. And protection, and safety, and security of the people of Palau, as required by constitution. So, the definition, the president, I'm going to propose, we can get the best management plan. We can get the. Make a conservation effort. And the. I'm going to talk to the national economy. We can get the plan, I'm going to talk to the. 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 Environment. The. 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 The environment, we can get the mix. The. The first step towards the approach, with the amendments, we can get the proposal, the House bill, the. Season 9, the bill, temporarily, authorize the ministry, the marine special planning. The internal waters, my continued, third deal waters, we sell, we sell exclusive economic, so the blue bill. It is the marine special planning, a proven and effective tools, the maintenance, the oceans correctly. And to ensure, we are human activities, my economic necessities, take place in a safe, in a sustainable way. So, the. I'm going to talk to you, the. We can get the. So, the. As. The. I'm going to. At the same time. I'm going to talk to you. Moreover, the minister, is granted authority. The permit to marine research, the marine research, the. The. I'm going to say, the. Ministry, I'm going to. The. 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 Permit, we can get the. Our research. Including a local community based fishing for research. So, we can get the marine special planning, I'm going to say. The. Explore, I'm going to talk to you, and research, we can get the. I'm going to talk to you, and I'm going to talk to you. We can get the. 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 Ministry, I'm going to go to the ministry of finance. Although, the special planning and research, I'm going to say. Allowable, the title, under the 27 PNC, subsection 123, my 174. This section, along, I'm going to talk to you, my mandate, the section 8, the. The. I will promote the development and approach of the marine resource management. And address, we can get the balance, that needs changing, that the changing needs of the national environment. My economic needs, I will be there. With the three years timeline. The. We can get the 22, 23, 24, September 2024. 2024, I say, the timing, I'm going to get the. I'm going to. We are. To. The. Marine special planning. It provides, we are effective 100% of our marine resource, including the definition of a defined area. No less than 30%. I'm going to tell you, 20%. I will be there, I'm going to. I'm going to. Logi, we can get the. I'm sure. And monoteques. We. We can get the. Create a modify, I say. I'm going to tell you, 20%. The definition, in which the base scientific economic data, scientific economic data related to conservation, my economic prosperity. My independence, I say, the speaker, I say. I'm saying. The most, the. The. I'm going to. 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 I say, the permit, I'm going to. The. The. I'm going to. The. I'm going to. I'm going to. 20%. I will be there, 20%. I'm going to. We can get the minimum, 20%. We. I'm going to say, we are. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm going to. It is. Consideration, I say, the. I'm going to. Ministry, my big week, the committee, the best position, the more sustainable management. The marine resource. My fisheries, my administration of the Palau National Marine Sanctuary. My domestic fishing zone. The proposed amendments, the objective, my fee. Ensure that big week provides support, more of my fee. My fees administration of the sanctuary. The definition of fishing zone, through conducting research, education, outreach, activities, recommending. And recommending conservation measures, my fee. The. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to say, the administration, I'm going to. My. The. The. Speaker, the committee, the recommendations, I'm going to. The recommendation, the. Committee. As noted, having fully examined the proposal, supplemental budget, the president. The document, I'm going to go to the ministry of finance, I'm going to. I'm going to. House. Bill number 11-64-7 S. A frugal. Fair balance. The authorization of marine special planning, a malessential, we can get the. Future economic growth, we can get, my prosperity, I will be there, my health. Health. I will be there, the speaker. We can get the. I'm going to talk to you, the marine special planning, I'm going to talk to you, the environment, I'm going to talk to you. My. Especially. The. Clearly defined, I'm going to. So, we can clearly define, we can get the roles of my fee, my big week. The. Will aid in the enforcement, my promotion of sustainable resource management. Though, after a careful review, my consideration, the committee, I propose. I gave several changes, the A B, 11-64-7 S, ensure, we can get the potential is fully realized. I'm going to. We can get the changes, we can get the. My number one, section 3, let's get clarity, I'm going to. The. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to say. Food service, 200,000, we can get the style, I'm going to. I'm going to. We can get the amount, authorization, appropriation, I'm going to say, level, I'm going to. I'm going to. We can get the. The. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Correct, I'm going to. I'm going to. Appropriation, authorization, same numbers, I'm going to. So, the national capital electricity, I'm going to. The. I'm going to. The. Authorization, I'm going to go to M H S, M H H S, the Palau Silver Lead Assistance Fund. It is the. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. The additional amount, we can get the. The. Total authorization, the section 3, the 48, the reflect, we can get the. We can get the lower, we can get section, appropriation, the section 3. We must get the total full amount, we can get the. We can reflect, we can get the changes. The blue perspective funding assistance, under the section, I do reflect, we can get the. The. Exactly, my appropriation, the section 3, I'm going to 1.6 million. So, the. I'm going to. 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 2.6 million, I'm going to. I'm going to. We can get the section 5, I'm going to. I'm going to. Section 3, I'm going to. I'm going to. Authorization, appropriation, I'm going to. I'm going to. The. Section 7, the. The. 11-12, we can get the. The. Before. I'm going to. We can get the. 11-12, we can get the. Have. I can get the. The. 50,000, 60, we can get the. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Issue, I'm going to. The. Source, I can funding, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. The. Loan. I'm going to. 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 The. The. Proposal, the president, I'm going to. In state, I say, 50,000, I'm going to. State, the. Remains, authorized, I'm going to. Hopefully, I'm going to. We can get the. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Best source. So, we can get the. The. Section 7, we can. The. Authorization, appropriation. The amended purpose, the authorization. I can operation, expansion, I'm going to face out, the fishing right. So, we can. The president, I'm going to. the me still the the title, twenty seven. The states are entitled. The distribution of revenues, the foreign fishing agreements. In the state, was the states have foregone much of the revenues for years. The more the the revenues, the fishing rights. As the result, the winding down period. My beginning, the beginning is the twenty fifteen. If the ultimate closure, the eighty percent of the water. Say you the fishing right, the normal the the Miral Morio. The proportion, the appropriation, my supplemental the foreign fishing agreement, revenue distribution, is the provide, the twenty seven P N C, the one seven. The subsection one seven seven, the the was subsection one seven seven. Say you fifty five, twenty, myself fifteen, the national. My I grateful, my grateful, I am the president, the the consider a recognized, again, need the state, the the government. The the proposal, the authorization, under eleven, the twelve. My to be different, the give you the the bill, was say you the thousand, the more you do I am the essence, section seven. The entire the amendment, the section twenty four, eleven, the twelve. The section, the regal, the 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 most the regal, the fishing rights, say you the new section is appropriated, the essence, section, the president. The appropriate, the seven nine nine. The base of population. The state governments, the 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 say you the calculate, I give you the state, I had the the thousand, the the thousand, the 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 report, the the[747.32]
The motion number six of section ten. We are going to support the ministry in its administration of the Palau Ministry. A Palau National Marine Sanctuary. We will say, oh, we are going to direct the administration of the PNMS to the ministry. So we say it's prudent and required, the ministry. It's physically prudent, required, the ministry, official, fisheries and environment are funding through an annual budgetary process in any funds that may be appropriated as needed. So you can meet the agreement that they will directly say that they will send them to the self-help dollar, the money of the the money of the Piquic, the Marine Sanctuary, so we will take the administration of the ministry. And so the money will be returned to the president. We recommend the money of the ministry, the agreement, oh, we will say. So we will not allow the ministry and more I will back the ministry back the law and then we will get the we will get the appropriation and they will do it directly and work it. And they will back the ministry. And so the number seven, I give all the technical corrections. But I'm not sure, I am meeting, I don't need to go through, I give the single underline, and then it's there, but some questions I have inside, I will go through individually. Like if I give them the title, my executive branch, with the right, I said two point six and one point five. And I ask you that, I said, maybe some guy next page in my table, and I give the chances, I give them, I will manage them. But if they say it's a little bit, a little bit of a budget, we will give it authorization, appropriation, and we will or tab soon. And they are saying, my tele-independence agency, we will direct them as model, we say. We last, I said, that the general, we will make authorization, appropriation, and we will do it. And so over say, I give the strike, and we replace it, say, I give corrective measures, the ability to the next state, and so over again, section thirty eight, and give appropriation to state government, and I give again, section seven eleven thousand, the change, we will deal with that, so I give authorization, and I am over this section. The group the authorize, like you, and I give the Blue Prosperity Plan as a source, and I give again, the million, the cost out is two, three, and I give again, seven nine nine, and the cost out, and one thousand, and I am eight thousand, and I am correct, I say, I give it, oh, you know. Say, if you get a, a little, I give them, and after the budget, lower fiscal year, like you, still full authorization, I give it, I will reflect the title, or the bill. A PPL eleven thousand, but I'm here, who I give, the other side, I am correct, the more the title, I will correct, I mean, I will, I will, I will report it. I basically, I give it, the other a style, I mean. And so, for section ten, and so Marine Special Project Plan, my technical support and public awareness, I give it, I give we say, within thirty days, the effective date of this act, the minister, the agriculture, fisheries, I give this exactly, the money, I mean, I say. I shall develop and submit a formal project plan for special marine planning. And so the message, I tell the earlier, more earlier, I will bring you, we will deal with it, we say, I give my room, and I give this plan. And they are the among the money donors, I give it, I speak, I will, I will. The question, we will, I will plan, it took time, I give the Marine Special Plan, like you, the Blue Prosperity, say, I will, 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 I will. Now, what, clearly define a project objective, my again, activities, my methodologies, to be employed during the Marine Special Planning. I give it, I saw the message, the ministry, it will move within thirty days, after the inception of the law. And they are more clearly detail, I give process for execution, monitoring, and control of Marine Special Planning. On the day, more I see there, technical support. My input received from the regional organizations that are in relevant concerns of the republic. During the, be, during the development of the formal project plan. And continuing for a duration, the Marine Special Planning authorized period, I mean, some official solicitor, technical support, and input from the relevant regional organizations, which Palau is a member. Including, but not limited to the Secretariat of the Pacific Regional spread, actually, Secretariat of the Pacific Regional Environment Program, my direct Pacific Island Forum Fisheries Agency, FFA, my direct SPC, the Pacific Community, and Paris, MAPN, and so the Paris, it is a member, I give it, this we will limit the money, I give it, so I will, I will say, and they give it, I think, I will, I will.
Elang kidra olbil government bela ultogra 360,000 lausen el mora P I C R C et ira omatua de 308 ra A P P E F. Embergue gidan muntel momalar semen segida konbri kuesion aragazetik. Tiam gudemgarra doron seurtial P I C R C il I understand the same means rarrik ala wasen. Gudembalubetra auriora P I C R C at P N M S el mora Mafy but therefore appropriate audogra fadar es al mortir. Disel dona peti ema kuesion aragai gel eligibility rtal P I C R C il morte agi de T E F seven. Where in four year grant lo miria agi de tril. Mung seak konbri konsion am akura am eua amika reservation. Ediregalo si sin time mesel segid mulsa odorin I understand the milto ga durasen a ministera mo granta odoriti ma permit el mora gel research activities. Disegi del gundasen kuesion aragadra sesel domestic community based fishing el asegid losen el mora research. Ma mo kuesion aptrilo wasen sen a ministera momstia permitra admetangara A E il sibil lo lavan me ultraw at the same time it morula research. Mm akura omtaba agi togo losa magara omara ema morula sel marine research activity a fasen ya ira del mega research e advice olbil but emorula la appropriate ra edisel momadokiar omengedra domestic fisheries research singora anyway agi gidagora reservation aragatial el togo aulmak amlo. Oh sair a report with W S sen, kumsul aragatial.
Kabo e chairman kamora tigibra adresa.
Makira hamitraga el al time a P P F elanga we're running nineteen percent. Basically malge garey mung sel obligations adregan dera ademitra ngi. Mung sel understand el wasi apikri mndregan ngi lo batzet katva ma ulm dinga abudre elanga dinga 360,000 lai esesel total appropriation agi de la fiscal de mesel mal mol mndregar kuesion ressel wasi prosperingi. Disegi del guk mu administration of P N M S el amo ben mora Mafy ya omdasko sesu mung mu ben mora Mafy el mora under ministry. And deral doasen mora Mafy mndil olmol matel udo del mora Mafy la Mafy ministry mung das appropriation authorization are required like any other ma ku komis din ngasegid esera demitra chairman dragamitira seneta ma ah Luhus Isaala ma et iminsada ngi wasen tial togora omengedra gidadriga omengedra dera gat expandel musao den ngi la galak el mora export ma clunela ma ulm tuspe wasi asumut permit rgaol mora A mung il musu bertial omengedra gal wabo filena. Se om permit ngi el mora emet om duul wasi om garam costa outer ngi om garam uttarar ngi om garam those are very necessary lette wasen. Gida maldirgagarey segidil togora omengedra gadriga musao den gal axul katsing ediregat explore agi roul avenue ruila edetuda katsing om garam uttarar ngal ngi gil om garam maintain ngi blagal magasak em ma gotik realize the actual value ngal togora omengedra. Ma agi gidadriga permit edel lo gi tial togora ames. Mm obastirirate al mung bosif il explore agi gil engla asil il provider da irar gidel al silson wasen. But el marine special planning ngal blue prosperity plan. Axu ngalal do mu ma ngalal ngalangi ma ngse edel axu. Loite ede gatotaman ngi ma dudodan. Ngai gidagora idea behind it. Mesel ngalakku omrel wasi asumu ma angua amra amis administrator of P N M S un mora ministry and namo dera didi aktile laududin. Gilmo minister president tamlesual nodo dalobongelmo. Disobet tril mon ebola appropriation el mortir tian wal didi emarg mndregar buul omengela ministry ngal omdasko sesing girel momal borra ministry mung se il adresa agi la axu. Agi ni chetir al ngsoj sete mol ngi to an madere to ngi el al time ngutwira P P F al fadala agi da ngi lusel ngasen seventeen fifty, seventy seven fifty. El ul mora sel admugel mu ben ngi el mora apikri. Ma omdaso al utel mercy el vo justify wasen. A minister asumu mu administration ngi el ministry el vo justify wasen is required nitrik faptalang mo clown garey al uben sel a ministry within its budgeting el al time eda gal gare agi cost. Segidagora idea behind the term mndregar didi emarg didi aktile el mora ministry. Disusi misel degil tokirabatsetra el al ra guk relasken ngi a minister of finance wasen. Ma ngi agi lukuk costa nitiras il recover logic agi el procedurra of finance wasen. Ndige mamisamamatu luli tian e galik tial udo del guk omor office expense mung sen dera mbekal ra et om ma gil coster min merada appropriate ra ro mungos il mega plan agi agi da cost. Segidagora disusi il concept del brother starting era beginning el al togora el al ves el government. Ndiregal gudul mes wasen esera beginning era government a president tamlen chensa agi ro buul ministries. Akura omdaso ngadriga mulmol mungassegidul dasme wasen. Alain ra ministry ngi rogi il mesel mosab el ax sling managed terror government as a whole. Disusi hera chensera wa ministerira ah MCC A chensan kele mu agi baybi da. Omdaso ngadriga sesigil el more concept wasen. Is aligning all the ministries according to his plan. Mm blago blaktaq wasel a ministry level men gidag requiringi misel degi axol togora agi gil edisel de sel dril ya sel luula ah twenty seven or six ba ulm ogedel ospe la lamlamodasen endinga executive order chensing like before a president talama samnesending executive order and chensing if from that agi da amlemu ben ngi la gi wasen. Omdaso ngi il praktismat de tarasumu gat mulmol ma gat disusi from the beginning el alir wasen. Alu buul ministera mal ospe audode tamay. Mung ogiwa agi gil on tri gado messa audode omin omdaso ngi akku lu mes ngasegid the floor matiala movement of president de mle chensar buul ministry according to his planning Aaron Singh proposal of president and I think in clear wasen last one. Segidagora lu mes ngi.
Naria falo ave Floridel mung lamongi.
Nga na, ngu il la uso de.
Okay. Telegetra garam luwi.
Oh, sila atal le spigera, telegal luwi gopse ngel mergo ma speaker Floridel beklad speaker ngama al guki dirgal di soka clarification. Disagil dirgal soal momdey lasegidil usadunia Floridel identify tial wasen dirgal ala certain marine research ma local eh ala minister ala local community based fishing sen segidil local community based fishing mulgora adre belauci el ngara eh lu pentirgal ala foreign fishing. Seak otel kansun ne chairman unsemil el mora omengedra ngi.
Oh, se mal ngi il tralke na mal auku.
Ya omengerung halé ekto ndito blo mlekklde di akurengasulem il selle mle togora milsa odorin wasen laal musudsel fifty thousand el ma state bol olmol munguk mora tar appropriation la goramal blu il la, mal goramal blu il la lu setja. Omengerunge chairman akora di way, angora di gorapal policy issue goradi akui kolera ah appropriation abatsetel diwan ludou way in this case etiang entegidil blue prosperity plan funding assistance. El ulme mergo otobiri atel ngi ringil il guk domesin gorar fishing revenue a omru omru sen. Mm wasen well m tumia konla urin wasi olgum seetla amitri wasen tial two point six se di bol fishing revenue. Lesel mulmusel de title twenty seven sesel a binger se almea eighty five percent triamora state fifteen percent triamora national akua dimle kuestion wasen elen tia furder dirgal musao del wasesel fifteen percent tamodia alolarin government. Di la sesel sumu ngari segidil revenue eighty five percent triamora state el mo obi equitable way agi gil issue il biltigari ngi wasan ngari amis tigari ngi mung blu gorak eh fifteen percent triamora national government. Ma ulma fasen gorapalasy issue kuestion wasen. Sumedel ngawa anel source ra revenue ulme emergue digidil de declare wasetiang amo fishing revenue in this case in sel seven hundred ninety nine thousand emergue mi ngil segidil fisher title twenty seven. Emergue agu resteringi akuk obi il mo nosa baybi da rancha government mung segidagora di mle mlara amandral wasetia galil girel de mor research se omdekum latal hapen alu ndiaga dirgal momdey. Di adre den data otangara tial erangelela kamitiri port mal luwi brotak emutel once again akurengasulem il blodia omutitel fifty thousand el mora egal state il guk amonia teeldedel among may lekua omdaso wasen sinsa orera ngua hundred sixty six thousand tia klor a fifty thousand mul mol goran wasen erekim la ngua klor a fifty thousand legal state mungu adingari ora fifty thousand. Yoregal lo urengasulem gidekse om sular atal le spigera.
Sular e telegetra mu gabo Floridet amin gabo e chairman.
Ah oh, isel tira dirgal hasel gott grimu. Chairman? Se akku makse. Um, musavo sesel gott grima plan.
Na, okay.
Hmm, okay, segidil local community based fishing se mal se se adangala hingil omengela minister application of fisheries en mal mirgatakli wasel local atigil registered ngar bela ngara ngar bela segidalolo. Abofi a adre bela mndregal registedal u mani angot el balul registered dingir el locally based segidag interpretation of ministry. Mesel mle klingi la sel mle gottel gel wasen tia se mal ngara outside ede am locally based ngar teegidet muska permit rga omgirem registered permitted to fish license bela wasen.
Bayser bela?
Bayser bela wasen segidag blend defining wasen. Selimle gott gatakli ngi. Esel longe rule grima lamongi sel sel fifty thousand esel longe del grima man norin ya ah man de direktia komadura president girel wasen. Selbodosar agi al fishing rights ngara fifteen percent, sixty five percent, twenty percent tia yang divided lu watetel ngai gidalawur ngal en wasen oy ma mle wasen tian dera two point six million ngar teegid disusi fishing rights. You say no, this is considering il one point six local revenue esegidil eight hundred thousand ngar fishing rights in the state. It's justified by the president ngasegid ma fasen. Andi tia gil eight hundred thousand president kau wasetia mo asel binger la fiktin you say ndiaga tia rogil revenue ngar blue prosperity plan abla dungul rogir ndiaga ngasel togora fishing rights. You say edisel sumu omi ngar fishing rights in one point six segidro two point, two point six le ma executive aga the changing in one point six en wasen segidil eight hundred thousand me state en mora binger la fishing rights len wasen. Albora binger fishing ngal al establisringi. Atigidil subsection elang one seventy seven. Segidagamingi sen engya ngusel mora local revenue sel one point six le munsel momo oit regidil ngar blue prosperity plan objectives. Segidamle explanation ngi wasen sumu ngusel fifteen percent national wasen. Ulma awana agi number fifteen percent selimle ngi lo mi ngi mo base rega sixty five ma twenty ngar discretion ngi wasen komusel se la national akmla ngu tial one point six gal blue prosperity plan. Mesel binger wasegid en wasen. Mung komo mi lo sel sixty five twenty el base agi gil ngalala ni sel fifteen percent tamla discretion ngar omi ngi la se blingela national akmla ngu tial local revenue mesel oban mora tora education agi de border control. Mesel fifteen percent ta dimle ngar binger me agi state el base agi population ngar omse komusel. Segidigil losa de ruling agidil se man hadet na inan is taking calculation etira mno ulmesa thousand dalan mno gorak. Segidag ibol osodil a president. Ndige va gulla gari kwasen. Dimla soal expandel mora next year de silvansen accepted tia gil bul next year esel may engya erangelela gidamomesin gidag full budget tir mndregar ngar teegid supplemental concept segidag argument ngi wasen.
Okay. Okay, kabo e telegetra ngaralonge boviliu.
Speaker man saul ngakamle saing la kamitiri port with a reservation. Akute chairman akmal mrengasulem mal mle detail report mal boktaq ma agel omso del ngasertial kamitiri port akmal full to many wasen guk timla dalan. Di ngaga dirgal mle tar agi mlesuagalogerinig segidil segidil tigingela local community based fishing activities. Ah think esera adangala amayong norin atel ledul ger aadra la agi el wasetiang musao den gal local aluban insabela foreign vessels in ya base bela registered el musol mo full under this. Mle swadel magatakli segidil wasen tia gat musao den ngarasel dosa den local even hima di lul wasen unclear to him wasen ngara definition ringi under tial. Mesegid ya mle tar agi le swadel omesin ngi legida mdengel wasen. Selamgatmokel sel planner bal awal desaritial malla ngaringi sel doidei sel girela a minister submita sel planner ngi lo old tigel objectives ma agi gil activities etir omdasel momruru alsetia gil P N M S. If atamo edisel ngara alalabilen emblaktaq wasen ngia mo authorize adre musoyisbra. So ngaga asey amneu reservation ngaga omengerunge segidil mle binger laudou de segidil dotira pasel title twenty seven ah subsection one seventy seven emgatakli regidil wasen ngaringi sel fifteen percent el girel mora aklo government eh sixty five mora state eset twenty percent ala mo obi logiwa population. So segid ya taramle wa confusion ngildire lela sel domesal dasen wasen sel fifteen percent ta government tia gat bololaringi. So segid mulul eden ngi ira sel sixty five percent tamal sumu ma wa wasen eh ma eighty percent tia doltob dinga eight hundred thousand mungulak wasen. Six hundred thousand segidil la bolomiri ngi agal state el base ndiaga el base population segidil la mo equiling mo divided among the states. Omengerunge segidil twenty percent agi damdengel wasen la mo obi logiwa population eh di gautal nasmodil alsetiang di akora taru ulmesa report emdengel wasen. A minister selgat mcleodas lo dosil mer olbil alsel o detloxelo old tigel boloru alsetial luror em di provider apil ma president ma minister ah besideing officials sa olbil akulau. Agi da swadel omesetial la agi gil wasen oy mlamu basi kesi awansel bol la tian ngia mo authorize wasen tangramo blu lau research otangramo soyisbra alsetia. Mungil ma mrengasulem il girela agi clarification el gamle provider ma oni tobl at the same time segidil guk kudo de tigel sel ogi mitela el gidamle kota de milsa odorin ngi lulgi authorization lo gi a local revenue mesegidil law la eighty bill fifteen million. Ma mrengasulem gale se di ma segidil ludaswe chairman el girel tia gil musoyisbra tial marine sanctuary il guk amrul omso bringi alu mesra la emskidil mora September thirty la twenty twenty four after three years while we continue to receive the two point six el help regidil il girela agi shortfall revenue ra il gidag awi elaisel era time wasen ndiaga teelela agi gil ludousio gigosen tia omengedra. Acti onitla wase bol ngi metalkugeriniga ngara amayong wasetia tsukum mm kalama soyisbra alseti el ma ngi omso ma tiam paygri girela wasen mori ngi agi gil goran a minister insabela authorize il mori ngi wa omenged for research a understand. Edisukum ma ngi foreign vessel ngi register bela ol il guk segidil dotiraqas segidil local community based fishing activities akua di soal mulmosi gorayogosio mlgirel segidil. Sulay, chairman.
Chairman.
Oh, ndiaga mal clear segidil togora P N M S agal mail wasen with this planning mulmol mle dera ndiaga omenged P N M S il doasen plantlin di toba den mo omenged dera unless tia gil la amoratogra research on omenged segidag mndil lia minister wasen ma Luhus wasen. Ndialal sabaidel di ngireden mitit permitra aden ngara A ah setia gil marine sanctuary mung mosabaidel subingel deiraringi akwasen mung mung deral doasigat openingi momenged tial eighty percent el al time. Moringi a case by case etir openingi for those research vessels ngara emsil axu inwa deida esubing agi gil dera gat tial omenged. Mesel lungwa ngi gil etuwa ngi gregid ngai gidamle specific il girela marine special planning wasen. Alguma if you look into the blue prosperity plan indiregal maskid segidil tial wasen. Agi robul industrial ngarasel ay amel molm ngarasel ngal three years agi da mo masa minister mesel alawa agi gil togora omenged ngar research ah permit. Mung in order for you to understand ringi agi gil togora marine sanctuary ma the reason why sel a minister wasen opening mle molm ngar thirty percent or more or less ngai gil research agi de modipendantinga within the next three years. Mung goragadangas segidil gorase bakrengal wasen. Tial alil openetia ndil bodangala A ding oy insabela minister openingi el omenged ra omenged regida research. Ndiregat not fully blown out the commercial fishing sel omdasor ngi wa twenty percent el al open completely dera research dera ogi. So we can actually se adlo misingela galakas segidil. Ding ah dirgal ulm gatamlo marine research section tenet tian swadel mesas segidil axu al planner til ma direction til wasen to come up with this marine special planning lo ngel tial blue prosperity ngaringi about map regimil wasen magara obora agi gil terms em within thirty days umla umlamai agi gil objective plan sergimil mo executed tial M S P ma gal blue prosperity plan el mel within thirty days ogadonge wasen agi gil research vessels ma omenged ngaringi ngaralsetial plan including ngai gil togora environmental matogra P N M S as a whole ngai gil el fishing industry. Nega gil tablo ngapart ngal they they need to work together. Ngirel there's two sides of the coin la alolgoru ngaringi sel togora fishing industry matogra environment. So they need to explore both uringi ngal plan mndiaga dida swadengel environmental aspect mung swadengi agi gil togora omenged. Segidag basically intent ringi gil togora permitting ngel fishing.
Ah falo ave telegetra.
Yamsula chairman el mal magatakli omso del tian di al dirgal mdengel wasetia sel omso el momgatmokel base agi gil deirasa research or whatever tiro collecta deiras logiwa togora omenged alsetia gil erera note example al mdengel waseda will determine the size it can motobdiya aldaso olbil wasen should we continue with eighty percent or reduce ngi ma ndiaga lburiora thirty percent el ngi consistent with the probable intention ma gil gold segidil wasen by twenty dori ekid ablul adre masen. At the same time insabel tia gil togora tial erial gida mna savingil for sanctuary it can be relocated el base astadi wasen ngar gira omi leponi eslonge gat maintain esel dori percent. El ngi a wal gorra betalad wasen m there's a good chance wasen after astadi esegi l deirasal bo provide for legislation making after three years em mosabel lotirigidil wasen ndiaga ndiaga necesserial mora al ngar lolmol ngar eighty percent mngirel mora dori percent or little bit more ndiaga lvolpil orse. That's my understanding tial base report maru. Ma mrengasulela kamitie a chairman ma vice ma beklad ngaringi agi l guk mle rauling regidil giretial Ngaringa iel kuk mal le'ra'olengi kidu, il gireti'la. Il kamiti report, mte'la legislation as well. Magadi, kabaim sa'ul providing information, ma clarification. Es el neklo confusion il gida. Especially myself, se'local community based fishing activities. Which are la'la il gida, diregal, to'girengi lo sing, it's too vague, unclear to him. So, unil, I hope financial broba definition eti'ang. Il mosobe'edel, ti'gal bo'li le'ira, il digidu madengi lo sing. Mal mol omso'uma, awu'ri'ora ede'ra, no later than September dori ra. Twenty twenty four, I think. That's three years time, e'ngia o'ol ta'igel ro'ul. Kumsa'ura se'ya, mal kuk me'posession has begin. Ya ulak mnesan with a reservation. Diregal metalku ng'edra, ma'ongol lo sing. Should we, tsukum ma so'is ba, awu'ri'ora seti'agidu eighty percent. Selu do'udel bela entitled for under a PNE. Paris tuna'ua agreement, moringa tal mal lela alu'ben ti'ang. Se'gida, akti oni'la girel mo'se'kidu, ndi'ka m'sula spigere. Ike'el, ul makmesan with a reservation. Abla'ka ng'ansera ng'ali'la ul'ala m'sula. Thank you, Spigere.
Sula, ng'aralung, kaboo'abili'yu. Mal m'saula spigere, mal unil, to'fse'el merhau ma'be'klar. N'aga direkt mnesan ti'la bill with reservation. Akti mal mo otina Chairman, mal unil, kutmakri'ha kamiti report, ma be'kel membersi ti'la kamiti. Mal unil bro'takla u'do'ud, ma financial analysis, topa da egal u'do'ud. Mal unil bro'takla two point four million, at topa'ra blue prosperity plan. A hundred thousand, ma hundred thousand, at topa'ra general fund altogether, two point six. Mal bro'takla spigere, mal unil ablingen, mal m'saula Chairman ti'la report. Se'el galil, a, at chero moment la'ira, se'to'andret e'la ng'a alsel se'y. Al, kadunle'ka'olengi, representa, lo sing, two point six million. Ding, a blue prosperity plan, topa'ra ni'ya, dinna two point four. M'ch'ye, be'sekuk, u'doswe'la president, mal du'unil. Mal unil, diregal mal unil bro'takla Chairman, selu do'edra. FY twenty twenty two, fifty thousand, mal be'kel state. Have you remain intact? Al bo'ri'ya, u'do'ud, ti'agidu, eighty bill, gida. Amlesan, passa budget, epasa'la PTSD. El mo, blat ku'asi egal budget a state in Bel'sis. M'sel, alsis, be'sek Chairman, m'saula direkt aket nu'krisay. M'se fifty thousand, ademongi girengi. Et ti'agidu ti'la be'asil, ludo'udel mobile, ande'la, til blingalela, seven PNC one seven seven. Regel a state, edirek mal unil bro'takla, m'ndi'ka mal m'saul. Ban, di'do'angsi spigere, a state among aklo'udodo. Spigere git ti'ang, amon, kada ma amendra, Palau National Marine Sanctuary. Se'el se'ka nel position eti'ang. Ma, kado mes e'de'ima, mal unil. Len, ng'aga, ulbon kamiu, ndikul bonkela president ra onetiu lo'el bill. Em'lo'klo re'el ti'la u'ri'ol. Kabiu wa, omamal be'asal ng'ati'ang, adimla'ke ng'ati'ang. Ma Chairman, na'waiselminsa, adi'ka adimla'ka ng'ati'asal onetiu lo'el bill. Em'le'klo re'lele, em'kutmo'klu, mal unil. To'me'se'itla institucion, uspea science based research, egutmakri. Em'mal unil, ati'te'lele mangai, m'le'wi'sel taime. Spigere, ike'isal sis, be, kadunle'ku lo sing osongosu u'do'ud, em'la'ki'atel bilen. El mo'siga, ap'is ludo'ud. El mo, address ike'el isu'ul ki'da al bangla, el'ang. Se'ringidra alsel. Egutmo'klu mu'unil, ya mo blatka ike'el kuk mo'klu kuk'ul mu. Len, ti'gal do'ud ngali'am thada'la taime. M'kutuk'ul mes eti'ang lo sing, el'ang taime, ed address eti'ya, ike'el isu'ul ki'da face. Ed sisi, ma, ten next kluk'ungias, el me'igay edo', ed bo'ri. Ti'agidu spigere kundaswe, ika'do bal ro'ul. Mal unil, kado mes eti'agidu va'se. Spigere, ike'da va'se omrang a science study based research. Le, ogi ike'gida, at topa'ra will result, egutmo'klu. A more sustainable and resilient management. El kuk'le, ike'la natural resources ike'gida, ni'akuk'la ader belau. El don'ari'om, uspe, em'utmo'klu ti'la environment ike'gida, ni'ya environment ader belau. Il gida a more, uspe, em'utmo'klu ike'gida. Spigere, mal unil, alu'udel m'sase'yi, ike'gida blam'utmo'klu. Ika'lu m'sel, m'le'galil, adi'legat ng'aralung, adi'legat ng'arar. Il giret ti'la. Community based fishing. Over a, a page six, bill. Em'otiri, a line nineteen. Over la kamiti report, mal bro'takla, page four. Ek mul lo sing. Ti'la community based fishing for marine research. Ding, ti'gal galabid. Mal guma la'kasi ti'ang, to'ora researchi. Edirek mal unil, m'utmo'klu ti'la bill, ike'el additional requirement, e'mol'urula mafii. El mo, m'saba'akla, ati'te'le ti'la resource ike'gida, environment ike'gida. Additional requirement, se'do sing, rules, alu'ben guidelines, mal u'ben framework. El ti'ra mo'akni, malu, ol'edi'ga include la'bi'la. Bl'dbas, ike'la muklungela abasyo. M'sel, klungela, alu'ra e'ngi. Ma ike'el, erial do'se ike'gida, ike'el, gora, ike'edel, magari'om. M'kutuk'uk se'kidu, sanctuary, ul'ali'ara alsel. Ike'gida ku'la, ike'la mi'la mo, a'mo'to'ol mara'el. Mal unil ike'gida spigere, m'dasmisi, a'ule'el ti'ang. Ediret, dosu'ul unil e'de'rap. E'to'ba ike'gida, il unil scientific research, ma de'ita. Ike'ang amon em'la president, la republic. Em'ergida, ader o'el bill, a'klulung. Es el de'bergida, ika'do'la ba ike'gida, ma'mlasa ti'la, ma openetia. A hundred percent, el ngaringa omenged lukuk, wa'igel kul'gora'ol. Kado m'daswe, ti'al, b'ale'edel, el'ang, d'garal alsel. K'ari'ingi ngaringa, m'kutuk'makri. Em'lici, esel, kluk'uk'ul mu, nd'adu'ul ng'ali'kluk. M'kutuk'makri, la'kluk'ul ng'ali'mu, ed obal mara'lu. Spigere, mal bro'takla, na'tulung ago, em'ngaringa RO sen conference, rabelul belau. Ng'ag, amki'utka'la mu, ma vice Chairman, al'gora kamiti, la natural resources environment, se'ni'ya Chairman, na'waiselminsa. Ike'mlagi, el un'ari'sel. RO sen conference, em'mal ble' bro'takla. Lo sing, auspe'la da, ago'ta klo'uspe'el, el mora'blulau. La, resources, uspe, m'tmo'klu ike'gida. Edirek lo'sisir taime. Ti'ogim fifty to fifty one percent, ti'la da'ba, at topa'ra ti'la axisen. Ti'la k'altal bu'ul ng'ispi'el, ika' scientific research, ma de'ital, at topa. Edirek ng'aisel commitment, RO sen conference, edirek ligada UN. Dori bayi'ri, dori, dori, et list ti'la dori percent, la, be'klu'lu'lu'la, ala'mla'lu'lu' sanctuary. Akwa mes ti'la bill, spigere, mal bro'takla, se'gida. Ng'aria ng'al'aset ku'asi, kada moru'ri, ma, era, se' m'utmo'klu. N'dya'ka bo'li g'ali'la dori percent, se'gida sanctuary. Len, ng'aram, ng'ali'gida commitment, la, UN, ma RO sen, il gida memberengi. Kada mal unil, expertise, ma u'do'ud, ma program, n'asi'ul ike'gida. Spigere, ike'gida dictum, em'mal unil ti'ang, el un'am'utmo'klu report. Edit ti'agidu, edirek gora concerna. Se'el domes, se'el u'do'ud, el mora PICRC, Palau International Gora Reef Center. Ika'lu'il be'ki, eb'ago'ng'ul'ali'ara, se'el u'do'ud, el mora general fund, eti'la ligara, PPEF. Spigere, se'el domes, ti'la. Fisheries Protection Trust Fund. Se'el Fisheries Protection Trust Fund, da, koto'p'to'ol u'do'ud bo'ri. Ike'lu'ul bela'lisha, la, maritaim. Mal u'ul bela'lisha, la, dial, ng'arala alsel, la, blue belau. Ike'el, mal alsel se'y. Og'iru'ingi, ng'ali'ha five percent, ediregal topa'ra PPEF, el mora alsel se'y. Spigere, ike'el, mal alsel se'y, mo, ike'el, ike'el penalty, sama'fa'n, ma bela'lisha, ng'ali'ike'el. Up to one million, ma'igel up to five million, ma'ali'ike'el m'ge'ali. Ti'gal go'de ku'asi, gora lakul u'do'ud, se'el el'ang. Di ti'agidu, Fisheries Protection Fund Trust Fund, u'do'ud e'de'ima, lo'uspe. El mora Palau National Marine Sanctuary. Ki'ti'ang la'ung, m'msa, Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. El uspe, global surveillance, enforcement, ti'agidu, erial, ti'ra amso'ul unil, tsukum ti'ang amala. Mal ku'ala'va be'ev ku'asi, ti'ama'lu, k'alu'ou'ud, edirek mnamor. A, to'ora. Ande'ra Ministry of Agriculture, ma Fisheries and Environment. Ike'gida, li'gal kota klopai'edil ike'gida, ti'la Palau International Gora Reef, ago'te'lu unil troi. Em'ru'ul, a'to'ol research, li'gal gi'to'ora, la'gora, edirek ng'ala'outsider. Em'ru'ul, ma insider, la, insor, ma o'xior. E'uspe, u'do'ud, mal ku'ala'ni, ti'spigere ku'asi. Mal se'el, ediret u'do'ud, m'di'la'ol mol mal ng'ala. A'gora'la, Palau International Gora Reef Center. Ki'ti'al domes, ti'la tourista, mal alunil, ike'gida, ike'la to'ora, to'ora u'do'ud, el mal almei. Ma, bo'la almei, ike'gida, budget, mal bro'takla, ti'la ligara, mafii ku'asi. Kada m'sel u'do'ud, ti'gal do'ali'ara, masa mafii, ika'lu'la ng'ali'ra, ten, t'obdi'ra, general account. Ed ru'li'ha budget, eti'lu'unil. Ding, ng'aga mal unil, ti'la, ti'atara'pa'edil ike'gida, ader belau. Kada ng'at'ak, at'ak'ayana, ike'gida, scientist, lo'ri'or e'de'ima. E'osisir taime, to'p'to'ol ng'al'la, tsukut ng'al'la belau. Su'ul mo scientist, el mu'telmei, lo'la ba ike'gida, ma. Se'el d'garal bela, des'te'la, to'ola, gora, ago'da, adel, el gora di'zulu'asil. Et ti'gal, ti'gal, scientist, el ru'ul scientist, el me'belau. Spigere, misi'igida, ng'aga mal unil, kasi'sel taime. Akwa, akwa'ul nit ku'asi, mal se'el, e'po'le'lu, di'zulu'ud, ul'ali'ara, PICRC. Edi'ka mal sing, kada u'do'ud, to'ol man, ki'ti'la, la'kam'udelosi. Eh, em'argue. Eh, ng'aga unil, kasi'sel taime, alsel e'de'ragi. Es el maine'sel report, la, si'la, eh, ng'uma'la sing, mal unil report, ika'lu'la mes e'de'ima. Em'ala'mlas, esel kuk, mal ul ti'agidu, be'asil. El ba'zulu'ul, m'sel, omenged, ndya'ka'ler. Ike'gida, ike'ba'zulu'la, ago'te'lu ul. Kada di'la'ka tilbir, esbe'ti'ada sis ba. Ika'lu'la'se, ndya'ka u'do'ud, m'kutma'ki, li'ge'ta'la, k'atpan. Eh, adu'ud, di'sel kuk'ul ku'asi. Se'lt'sa'if'ra alsel, ike'edel, magal'ol, ber'ni'la, se'ringi'la alsel. Egutmakri, m'msisi, eh, omes, rakt'kluk'uk'ul mu, lo'bat ti'la, om'rol'edel. Egutmakri, spigere. Di'gida, aktun, spigere, ng'ama'la m'saula pi'ala.
Sula, akumesa, akumesa taime, mal il'le'lo'klak. Kaboo'eh, delegatara, aru'ran kongitara.
Sula, spigere, at'ale, to'fse'el ngorga'uma. Spigere, ma flo'li'ile, be'kel delegat, m'na, m'lu'uk, mal to'ol, unit'uk'ul giret ti'la. Report, eh, ng'aga, go'te, nso'gal mo otina, at ser'peri'gida, waiselminsa, la, mal unil report. Kado mes, in'wa, ti'ak, mal kwestion ike'gida, la, report. Ba'idi so'gal mu. O. O'reng, sula'la, Presidente, ti'la Blue Prosperity Fund. U'ar'lo, u'ma'va'va'lo, u'ar'lo, be'ti'gra, a'gora'ri'inga, alsel ti'la, ap'demikil. The Governor Antin, no'da'ki'garu'lela u'do'ud, se'tu'iste'gida, mil'tamal. Ed'gora, man'ut'ak, de'la Presidente, ma numred. Isigit ti'la, the fund of blue prosperity, ti'la two point six. M'se'edro'uspe'ingi, m'kora'mlo'klo'ul, ding, k'wau'undas, ti'galit'iltar'aki, alu'ben ike'gida, bar'no'se'el de'era. Mm. Akmesa'ina report, len, wat'egida, se'ku'ku'al posisyon, akmesa'ina report. El'ang, se'el domes, a report, ten, ng'al, to'usil ti'gida, m'su. Mo'igem, lam'udun. Morion, mal al, m'su, ba scientific, ma'arang, m'tu'ngit'ya, de'berbelau. Akwa ding ul di, kora, m'kudel'usodi. Ag'ra ng'aringa, alsel, la, north. Ag'ra ng'aringa, alsel, la, east, west, south. M'kora'm'utmo'klu ike'gida, ike'gida, to'ol, to'ol, bladu'udun, ng'ama'la lo sing. Ng'argi'la, ng'aringa, ang'ikil. Ng'argi'la, ti'gal ang'ikil, m'se'el kuk'omul, altenito, ti'ak'ra, ang'ikil. M'mal al, m'lo'dimisil, lo sing, m'se'el, di'tnu'se'el, ku'la, unil, il'ru'ul, merab'lu'belau. Se'gida, gora mal, so'kat ti'agidu le. Eh, ika'la ti'gal, sa'tmal, sula'gal mu, m'brutakla, konstitucion lo sing. A marine resource, a, om'ra, a management, ti'la. Ng'orgid. The state, a'do'udil, di'ovak twelve miles, se'le'prek'da, a'blu. Es el mo, a'klo'klar, national, mal amal'la'atak. Mm. Akumesa, a report, ndi'gal mal, kora, a unila'unku, le'si, ndi'gal lo sing. Ap'ikri'du, ma, ti'la, mafa, amutma'ki, esola'eh, em'argue, em'skid, a'kora mu, mu'ru'la, gora un'i'port, ike'gida, sanctuary. Ika'la ti'gal, mal. Eh, kado mes, ra, se'el, ng'al, kuk'pesi, m'momisyon, la, a, Gora Reef. Em'wal, di'ng'aa, ti'la, la'ol mol, me'la, a, kula'kubus. Eh, a marine resource, kuk'oba'mu'ra ng'ol. Ida'ler bela, ng'aramun, eh. Eh, delegatara, pan, adimla'tsan, edlo'ng'ol, k'limna'la alsel ti'la. M'mse'gida, ul, se'el, se'el kutk'kreta, ti'la, Gora Reef, ike'gida, ng'al, di'lu'usu, bamran. Ike'el, gora, arm, ng'arang, ng'al'asel, ti'la, kula'ol mol, me'la'kula'kubus. Imna'tsan, mal mu'se'el, mol. Akum'das'et ti'la, billa, wa'blal, open, na, ike'gida, lo sing, la'ng'ia, a'kut'or, resource, alsel ti'la, ng'ol. M'grabo'ud, ng'ol, delegatara, ng'atpan, ed'asubit'ya. Akum'das'et ti'agidu, blan'eli'la Presidente, la, unil, mu. Ba'ide, di'ke'ldu, nu'ti'la, report, nu'se'ldu, nu'ti'la bill, kuk'uk'uk'uk'uk'tu'wa'trattal, bagas. El ta'igel, dom'das'ru'gu, se'el, unil, m'sula, b'ingela, u'do'ud, ab'ot'adobi, u'do'ud. Ba'idi'ses, ke'el, me'amringi. Mm, al'adu'lu, u'do'ud, me'ung'igla, domi, m'kut'igla, adel, dim'am'dal. M'm'ura, m'm'ura, al bill, na'masa, lu'egadi'na, da'ob, m'm'ursel, lo'ese. Di, so'gal mu'se'gida, eh, ti'spigere, ng'ama'la m'saula, at'ale. Edi'gal mal, m'kora unil, alu'usel, lo'usa, akumesa, report, ra, at chermi'gida, waiselminsa, mal, gora. A. A sugut'ab, se'el, etan dead, tau'sen, mandi'ka'ri, den, m'se'el, un'lar, authorization. Akuk'nek'se'gida. Li'ri'altar, mu'ul m'su. Edi'ka m'spe'ingi, m'sel, mal, gora, asola' delegat, la, m'lu'ku, se'el ku'as'uselid, l'wa'li'mottab, su'lar, be'klar, fifty. Ng'la'li'ka, mal, ro'ter. Mm, akti, akti, mal, ul'una'se'du mu'ti'ang, m'mre, m'mre, stat'om'su. Ike'gida, se'el, malitri, sm'ak'udume'ud, egut'ki, m'utiu'rgi. Akku'ro, m'se'kti'la, ike'la, solar, gum, git'ong'uk'um. Ike'gida, ma'te'til, om'rol'la, solar, egut'ki, tro'unil to'ue. M'sula, spigere, ng'ali'ike'gida, so'at mu, m'sula.
Eh, Floridel. Medisio, pre'isessi, gari'ha, so'gal burgora, edal. Asesional mutel, mo, resume, Floridera, domesa taime, mal eleven fifteen. M'mutu'isitra, medmoxione, da, to'ol mol, mora, sesion.
So, move, Spiel. The adapter, standing Kamiti Report Number eleven dash fifty eight, ike'gida, Housebeam Number eleven dash sixty four dash seven.
Se'gida, motion, la, listed, eh, seconded, di'gir'go'ngi. The adapter, ti'la Kamiti Report, du'oi.
Oi.
Onto. Ti'ang, namai, ti'ang ontogo, Flor. Eh, be, kur'it'la, mo'mega, motion, e'v'us'ed, m'mora, a second, se'el, A B. Om'wasi. M'ora, A B, da, passing, da, second, eh, esola'la, gora, adra'la, ike'gida, di'zulu'tu'ko'bal, m'ora, Floridel.
Oi, Se'Spiel, domes, ra, r'sensit, ti'la bill, for review, ra, adra'la'argi. El bo'li'wa'igel, mol'goi, ma, akm'up, ma'da, godan, ra'ali'ndere'gida, m'sel, item twelve. A B, a second reading. Eh, the, be'ga motion, adapter, the passer, ti'la, Housebeam Number eleven, dash sixty four, dash seven, a second reading.
Se'gida, motion, di'pro'sid, mo'passer, ti'la, il'vila, a second reading, et nasi'anted. Di'gir'go'ngi, du'oi.
Oi.
Onto. Ti'ang, amnashop, kada mora, vi, eh, Flor.
Oi, ng'ada, mutu'm'sel.
Di'ka'mega, motion, e'al, m'la'ra'vil. A second reading.
Oh. So, 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 move, el, passer, a second reading, Housebeam Number eleven, dash sixty four, dash seven.
Di'gida, motion, et nasi'anted, m'la'at, ti'asup'ri'ventat, bill, a second reading. Di'gir'go'ngi, du'oi.
Oi.
Onto. Ti'ang, namai, a, a second reading, Floridel.
Oi, ng'ada, g'obal, m'sel. A'ali'ndi, item twelve, Spiel, ma, eh, a first reading, be'ga motion, the passer, first reading, a, Housebeam Number eleven, dash sixty five, dash seven.
Se'gida, motion, m'lar, set'vila, first reading, et nasi'anted, clear, Kam'i, ve'titul.
Housebeam Number eleven, dash sixty five, dash seven. Yan, domdassong'la, amamlot, ra, five PNC subsection four zero one. Em'roomu, ra, two thousand, two million dollars, limit, em'ual'na, ra'ru'ul, sixteen states, rap'ek, rabelul belau. Em'to'open, a line of credit, mal u'ba'te'ins, che'it'ra loans. Ti'able, introducing, ya, delegat, ni'rat, ka'kanai, marukul delegates.
Ike'gida, ta'ton, nam'ui'we, eh, a'wera, the water discussion, a'ul'nitra, amen, introduce her. Mal, perskida, overview, ti'la, Kamiti Report, a, a, amin, ti'la bill, akumesen, be'klar, mnesan, ti'la, amal, m'mred, mara'li, delegat, ra'ila. Kaboo, m'awla'ol.
Sula, Ng'Spiel, at'ale, ago'te'lu'ul, akmal, m'rengasul'ir, ar be'klar. L'dimo, kur'ka'uma, Spigere, ma vice Spigere, ma Floridera, le jo'ineri'gida, kada, at mahal, not pa'it, ti'la, l'dassong'la. M'm'Spigere, ng'ma, ti'ak, mal di'mo, ti'at'edan, mal di'wan pa'isa. M'mal, gora di, so'gal di'mo, om'katak'risel, wa'la'k'ramli, os'ngela, os'ngedel, girela, awat'yang. Ma. M'm'se'gisir, title, nam'ui'ra'clear. Di, Spigere, ng'm'sin'se, since, la, nineteen seventy nine, m'mutre'la. Se'la doma'konstitucion, ike'gida, nineteen seventy nine. Ke'ma'og'wa'me, e'de'rap. El da, ngaringa state government, l'urul, l'ubunkela, national government. E'osis'ultai, Mr. Spigere, ki'ti'la, mortui, resel, ni'ya, old'swell. Rung'ul'el, old'swell, la, House of Delegat. El wasebol, ti'agidu, ng'ala'udassong'la, el wasebol, se'bel'la, be'kel state. El m'utmo'klu, la, planning commissioner tier, eh, rule, master planner tier. M'msel, bol, rule, master planner tier, ike'la state. Ika'da, ng'ara, urung'ul'efel, lo sing, ike'la, be'kel state, ike'gida, a'mos'ba'ir, el, gora, OT. Gora, OT, se'gida, los'engi. M'ra, ma'uv'eng'uislist, eti'ir, ike'el, way, a, urung'ul'ir, el m'mutmo'klu, a'blu'ir, al ike'la be'kel state. M'mogiu, se'gida, los'ong'ed, ma'urung'ul'efel, girela, ike'la, ta'ar, ma'klul, muste'it, rabelu'belau. Esolangi, osis'ultai, ma, esel, do, bol'todol, tirak'ra, konstitucion, m'ngaringa, la, la, topa. Eh, reach to reef, kada ng'ara, ke'den, mora, a, a'ol mol. Ike'el, ro'ul, living, ma, non-living resources, ang'ara, alsel, ike'el, be'kel blue. Egen roku living, ma non living resources, angara alsel, egen bekl blue. Ah, klo klair egen blue, lngarini. Mung, spiger, tial, tial wesel kirela, amo wat yegid, el wasebol sebe la, la amender seki, del PNC. Five PNC subsection four oh one. Bolsebe el, elmsate al egal bekl state. Namua about time, spiger, el, el da, el da, dalet egal state, the be egal state, emu bolsebe ir, losiga tial. Lomdasu losiga tial, el wasen magarang, emussebe ir, el, el mu, od, od, til, door. Eh, mengatmokla egal bulurir, luldui, ekiwa yegid, living, ma non living resources sebe tir, egal bulurir. Mung, osisultaim, tial uldasun mola, spiger, ah, mal, ngamol try yegid, amendement, el wase, ah. Um, okut tial loan, amin a state, emu malalone, ah, atira more responsible. Emu hara tial line of credit, malu be loan. El luldimu kro egen interest rige, ma egen ngi vilfish. Eh, ngi amo mu ilsoli responsibility tir, egen state. El tir, amo ra, al seki, the line of credit, malu be loan. Tiana spiger, adirek, koran wal, kado koran, ah, mal urungulifel, sebe el koran, amor, boru la egal bulu. Bekl ta'rmaklul muste, trablur bela, el mu, kado koran wa bodolisi arendir. Mung mossebe, omak samariar tir, mung mossebe ir, koran, amal mo, o, o samariar. Eh mossebe ir, mala develo pa state, tel tir, lospe, egal resources sebe tir. El bolsebe el mastri ra tial, emu bolsebe ir, ta open rige, el lakavirka donu pasil koran wal, lokula state. El wase, ndiak, kamalinga udod, ndi, ndi, tia gid, al limit, arkao. Mung, aku, maringa spiger, el wase, ah, tiana, akora wa bol, sate al egal bekl state. Mung mossebe el, el mala ru la master planner tir. Eh, meru gonemi mossebe ir, lospe, egen living, ma non living, resources, lngaral sila bulurir. Esola ngal ngi, amomak samariar tir, omak samariar ringa tir. Mung mossebe ir, mala, lo makasal budulu, eh, develo pa egal bekl bulurir. Mung mossebe el, dyak adid, relyer seki, dulu asing black grant, malu be, emutudel, national, ah, umeski da udod. Mung, ngaku, mala waset, tiana, di ngara first reading, emu bolsebe el, mura gamiti. El lutel man mu konsaltra governors, ma egen olbi, egen bekl blue. Eh, lutel man, musseki, del siasing, ngar urungulil, awurungulir, ma, osenge, ma urungulir, egal ta'rmaklul muste, trablur bela. El mogiu tia gid, lnya oldasun mola, el wase, mema, lakadu kor, olakes rige, emu bolsebe el, mala op, opener rige. Eh, sate el la bekl state, emu bolsebe il, losi, elongitu, elu, olaya, ah, la, elu, pol ngaria line of credit, tel tir. Ma, el ubet alone, el dyak, ngaria, eh, diesel, el dirka donu orrega da tir, eh, merku, olakes sebe tir. Wase, ndiak, ngiri ul magarang, ngiri ul magarang. Seki, spiger, akora wal, tia maldi one page, ndi nga akora man, no, mluke yegida tokol tokoling. Akmalu, mala wasen, lamua about time, el state, abo, tel gib, koran, mado, dara, ah, okul. Mung mossebe el, mala develo pa egal, abelu ir, lospe, ah, resources sebe tir, ra, egen ngara bulurir. Musula, spier, a tial.
Sula eh, delegatra ida, yeg, direk, omesa, adel megalon, girea bilir. Tokolaterala yegil, seel blind, seel utu. Direk, state government, ah, ngaria klo klair, ngaria building rige, ngaria temel. Direk, seel kolateral, ah, tial idea malu gin, emla gire, venture into the, another option. Sin, dyak didu lagana nation government, malu be, tian ngara institucion, yegid, lossega, demla ngira, aklu government, adu ru la loan. Tigir gonemi, the passer tial first reading, du hoy?
Oi.
Onto. At, tiana namai, eh, asan mura gamitira, awesemins, Floridair.
Oi, spier, aktele mukma, the passer a first reading, housepin number eleven dash sixty-six dash seven.
Se kidha moxion, mala set bi ra, a first reading, eh, clear gami viya title?
Housepin number eleven dash sixty-six dash seven is. Tial uldasun mola, amomlot ra forty PNC subsection fourteen eight. Emu require a wonder, dragel funds, deposit, mura non communicable disease fund, NCD fund. Libolo speel, emu wasewa, aralaw koru, rehimo, talasis patient. Logiwa otar katlela wonder, dara udod ra NCD. Fund, el mora be sel fund, libolo speel, harawak me, den luquim, il basin, tra aralaw koru. Makuktingo dolomsodel, tia ble introduce niya delegat, arura, marutoisel delegates.
Se kidha title namuiwe, et tia, direk, di ngan first reading, agu litra, ah, delegatra bulu ngiwal. De be skidha overview tial bil, edo ngura first reading, delegatra ngiwal.
Kama saal spigere, et tiana, geyda, clear gami viya title tial bil. Ngwadi lo, libol amender seel ul, egera, ah, NCD fund, di duwa one dur. Ndi, sokal musmu di, asek ti, ti, mre, smu di, tial seel wal, ti, tial. Eh, asel domes, seel NCD fund, seel gotu meru, ngualdi bril, fokus atu blu tokoe. Ndi mora, a promotion, a education, a health. Misel domes, ngu ablan muwa, atu dur, da tial udod, eh, one dur, damde. Esola eh, seel domes, tigil ngay, mo, the laasisel patient, te tamana wutok, ra ebri. Dyak udu yegal bebi ra bulu, doctor, tanga ya, wadi, blakal saing, la dyak amashe, ra bulurin, ndi. Tigir bo bo yegil saing, la dyak bo bo yegil seer, mal ngarbaba arala, aku ru. Mung, nguwaya, alove yegil, la NCD fund, obi mo eder, brion, eh, one dur, rige, amo, mo, lospe ni tige yed. Ngare mo, the laasisel patient, lo, o, noser tir, aral tial, lu ru tir, luquim il basin. Esola eh, seel wal, seki duquim il basin, seel wal, luquim il basin, tu bul hara ngi, abol deposit rige, a finance. Embergue, era, muria special, agon trini, nguwa, nguwa, du kor, lo kor ngi, ba spigil, evolving fund. Ndi sebe el, lospe yegi, tige sme, ngar ngi, koran mori, asesel, ndiak, sal dimu flit, tial udod, ndi spigere. Mung, seki, ya, wal, koran mal, mu tige tial bil, dimu no se tige, del sme, ngare mo, the laasis. Esola eh, ngay seel ta bil, namai, magumda, tige, bi, amogadala saing, agumda, seel ta bil, la kuarte. Mra insurance, ah, sebe el, mu tokor, mre, ndi, agumda, seel, al dyak amre. Et tial, go, namai, ndi sebe el, musta taneksi, eh, asukmu, musel time, ah, insurance, amokaber, he mo, the laasis. Eh, na se, suldi tial, ma, udodu, musel, agada, ah, health fund, to, spee rige, lo, magarling. Tigal, dal, seel bulu, tige, nama sixty, na, amo, daalol, angara kli. Embergue, dim gidha, hara tir, misel olmusew. Se kidha wal, wal, buktet, tial, madimu olmusew. Ngay, yegil, alse, mame sin, underline, eh, yegida koran be esel muttial. Eh, emlu ya, be esel section, tial, bil, el diwa, isu, wase, hm. Seki, del, el, be esel section, ah, yegil, he mo, the laasisel patient fund. Eh, seki, del muson, ndi underline, egen ru ku, tin, tin. Et tia gid, one dur, damai, mo musew, tige yegid, el, el, ngare, he mo, the laasisel patient. Eh, dimo pe, seki, del fifty percent, eh, seki, del kuk fifty percent, blu hara ngi. Eh, seel mu, deposit in a finance. Eh, seel minister, ra, seel kuk, se action, ra, mi minister, ah, held, in services, seel, ngari, seel ngaria, a finance rige. Seki, amo mura, lumula regulation, magaral, regulate tial, lo, multaludod, emo deposit rige. Mu diak, akora mal, rodrin gid, musel, deposit rige. A finance, yegid, special account, more evolving account, emu tekki, tige yed, ngar, seki, da koran. Akalibol, musodel, mame sin, ngaria ke, akmalu, ngasulit, tige, el, el delegat, musu, saing, tial. Et tial, direk, wa, ngakal, amdanglar, nli, tial, malu, sme, speagis.
Okay, digo ta, eh, delegat, blilu, loldar, sumandi ka, eh, insira, gada, ulu first reading, kavu awla.
Kama saal, spigere, ti sokal wa isu, ra, akti emena, delegat, arura, ngil blur ngiwal, pasin, akmasen, ra, seel original. Eh, digo, osisultaim, akmalu, mure, spigere, di kap tok, ma, adra blilu, mura, the laasis. Mute, amal mu ngi, kama, adra blilu, direk, kama, kama, saal, delegatra, ngiwal. Eh, osisultaim, aku mura, pasin, yegan ame, mala mu ngi, estela mu ngi, emu, mo, kro, kro, tial, nige, la, he mo, the laasis. Kama saal, eh, direk, omura, pasin, gid, aldu, gamre, angar led, losi, ega yegid, malu mil program, ma service. El mura, aral, lo, gid, omte, tir, egal state. Kama saal, spigere, malu mil bil.
Tigir gonemi, passer tial a first reading, du hoy?
Oi.
Onto. Tiana namai, asan mura gamitira, ah, akti, go, men, Madame Kanai, Floridair.
Oi, spier, adobe saa, mure, 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 mure. Pokme gamoxion, the passer, adur reading, housepin number eleven, dash thirty-one, dash three, HD one.
Se kidha moxion, mala set bi ra, adur, den, final reading, emnasengan det, clear gami viya title?
Housepin number eleven, dash thirty-one, dash three, HD one. Tial uldasun mola, amomlot ra title, thirty-one, rapla national code. Don mu makpe, se modernize our terminology, ra, ngara al, ngartial, uldasun mola. Emu omak ngara, la, omralela state master plan, emukutmaklia state planning commission. Emukutmaklia, palau regional planning commission. Emomlot ra title forty, mori kwa, rapel state government, to mo justify, a request, ter tir, il girela udod. Mura capital improvement project, el base, a prioritize needs, ra state master plan. Il girela, karu, ma development, makuktingo dolomsodel. Tia ble introduce niya delegat, otod, maroku delegates.
Se kidha title namuiwe, et tiamal, meka, mangala, seka, diskasyon rige, clear, katsum, dyak ak question, eh, clear, mu awro call.
Delegat Arura.
Oi.
Delegat Kibonst Junior.
Oi.
Delegat Kulibert. Floridair Kanai.
Yes.
Delegat Kamsong.
Oi.
Delegat Marino. Speaker Ngirayweb.
Oi.
Delegat Ngiratka Kanai.
Oi.
Delegat Ongidoble.
Oi.
Delegat Otod.
Oi.
Delegat Trauluko.
Oi.
Delegat Sinza.
Oi.
Delegat Solaplay.
Oi.
Delegat Talley.
Oi.
Delegat Umetaro.
Oi.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, Saint Kelmor, housepin number eleven, dash thirty-one, dash three, HD one, a fifteen, yes, eh, diagano.
Se kidha, ke kar, Saint Kyo, gid, fifty, ngar tian, amin, Saint Kortian, fifteen, yes, eh, diagano. Tiana namai, Floridair. Floridair.
Director, mukma, the passer, adur reading, housepin number eleven, dash forty-six, dash four, HD one.
Yegida moxion, emnasengan det, eh, clear gami viya title?
Housepin number eleven, dash forty-six, dash four, HD one. Tial uldasun mola, amomlot ra title nine, rapla national code. Don mu protect, rapla one property owners, ra, ngar lela, dal malir. Logiwa omak tabehel, ak agriculture product registry, ma license, makuktingo dolomsodel. Tial ble introduce niya delegat, Otod, marutoisel delegates.
Se kidha title namuiwe, et tia, direk, mal, meka, mangala, diskasyon rige, la, second reading. Sumu dyak, muthu ngaria, ament rige, eh, clear, eh, mola, ra, rocall.
Delegat Arura.
Oi.
Delegat Kibonst Junior.
Oi.
Delegat Kulibert. Floridair Kanai.
Oi.
Delegat Kamsong.
Oi.
Delegat Marino. Speaker Ngirayweb.
Oi.
Delegat Ngiratka Kanai.
Oi.
Delegat Ongidoble. Delegat Otod.
Oi.
Delegat Trauluko.
Oi.
Delegat Sinza.
Oi.
Delegat Solaplay.
Oi.
Delegat Talley.
Oi.
Delegat Umetaro.
Oi.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, Saint Kelmor, housepin number eleven, dash forty-six, dash four, HD one, a fifteen, yes, eh, diagano.
Se kidha, kar, Saint Kyo, tial bil, emlamai, fifteen, yes, eh, diagano. Floridair.
Mure, 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 spier, el musel item fourteen, ma, omomega moxion, for change, se seal order, ra galen dere yegi. Mala, emu, ra, house change resolution number eleven, dash thirty-three, dash seven, is, el musel adoption, B.
Se kidha moxion, mura, tial mora adoption, emnasengan det, Tigir gonemi, the, so move, mora adoption, du hoy?
Oi.
Onto. Tiana emla so move, del mora adoption, Floridair.
Mure, 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 motion for adoption, or seki, resolution, spier, eleven, dash thirty-three, dash seven.
Se kidha moxion, direk, mala, tial resolution, emnasengan det, clear, gami viya title?
House change resolution number eleven, dash thirty-three, dash seven is. Tial house change resolution, amo ulit, disa akmol, kli tarreng, maklu, ubel, mura, ra, drablil, ra, dal. Mar, drablur bela, il girela, kais, emru, lomrola, emlamu, degus, radlo, led, el masao Salvador. Emle ambassador extraordinary, plenipotentiary, ra, blu, bela, el maraxiakal. Eh, direk, emle, medical coordinator, rapla, medical referred programmer, ah, away. Emle, ngil, adras, yobai, emle, wek, na, sa, egen, ne, contribution, se rige. Ma, commitments, ma, rere, il girela, blu, bela, tokuni, a development, rapla, foreign career services, ma private sector. Eh, ngil, lukosiu, el mora, bekl, talarol, el mor tirak, rige, il girela, amring, lurere, talarongul. Ma, ngil, tle, tele, laureol, ma, ngil, se rige. Tial resolution, able introduce, se rige, delegat Sinza, marutoisel delegates.
Se kidha, title namuiwe, edo awla, ngumsa, amen introduceer, eh, bulu, ra, bulu, ngal, udo, pasa, resolution, adirek, ngara, drin. Delegatra, ngar alon.
Spier, kama saal, ma, Tigir bekl, aramlesai, ni, tial resolution. Eh, pretty much, clear, kama, samrai, se tial resolution. Ndi, klo tutrel, tokora highlights, yegil kukpe, bi, ra, rere, ngal, adama, yegil kuk, koran background, this, rige. So, dyawaisegid, tial resolution, why seki, spigere, wase. Why se, ah, late, former ambassador, Masao Salvador. Ah, emle, LSA, November ten, nineteen fifty-four, ra, blu, ra, lo, ngel, la, Salvador, blu, dumai, mogdon, Ngiraywas, Salvador. Direk, lawaisegid, el wase, nineteen seventeen, de graduate, ra, long, elementary school, ra, blu, ra, long. Nineteen seventy-four, entilo, rapla, high school. Osisultaim, direk, lawaisegid, el wase, nineteen seventy-four, entilo, ra, blu, bela, el mora, blu, ra, rigel. Mlmal, mol, masculera, Crown Valley State University, ngi, angara, Crown Rapids, ah, Michigan. Mra school, se, ra nineteen seventy-four, ma nineteen seventy-six. Emle, decide, emlmal, mol, masculera, ah, Honolulu, Hawaii. Emu, gusel, nineteen seventy-nine, el mora nineteen eighty-two. Mlmal, mol, masculera, seminar, ah, university, ra, ngara, Honolulu. Entilo, globati, gire, ngi, ra bachelor of arts and science. Direk, lawaisegid, el wase, nineteen eighty-two, ma nineteen eighty-four. Mlmal, mol, masculera, mala, university of Hawaii. Eh, taramle, wotol, adperol, entilo, de spigere, ngilo, master, se gire, ngi, ra, public health. Setaim, adirek, ngara school, ah, ah, university of Hawaii, emla, ngia, mate, eight months, from, eh, mora, December, nineteen eighty-four. Uludor, emle, environmental health and safety technician, ah, university of Hawaii. Mlanger, lela, laboratory safety inspection, accident investigation, air control, mass service waste, packaging, and general occupational health and safety. Direk, subid, eh, waisegid, la, alse tial resolution, wase, se, nineteen seventy-eight. El mora nineteen, la, iluwan, ndirek, lulu, emle, night manager, international barzar. Angara, wai, ki, ki, international, emle, lela, emle, night shift operation, ah, lulu, ah, night shift operation, ngi, wal, lulu, ngara, stoak. Tigay gid, emla, ngia, eleven, employees, lulu, emle, ngel, ngi, emle, ngar, lela, tokora udod. Otul, la klar, ma, direk, security, ma, kascomer service.
Osisultaim, spigere, tial resolution, adirek, lawaisegid, wase. Nineteen ninety-five, mora nineteen ninety-seven. Mlmut, kal, mo, medical coordinator, ah, bela, rapla, medical program, lobankela, tripler, army, medical center, ngara Hawaii. Mangan, lela, emle, coordinator, uludor, lobankela, sme, il girela, appointment, ter tir, ma scheduling. Eh, direk, osisultaim, ulungse, tige, official, ader bela, usel, bor Hawaii, kuk, girela, yegil, lure, rie. Osisultaim, eh, seel, medical coordinator, emgay gid, late, former ambassador, Masao Salvador. Adirek, emle, attend, ah, first, micro-nation diplomatic training program. Mlaringi, ra, Honolulu, adra, US Department of Interior, emle, kandak, rige.